Call the community of the whole meeting for Monday, April nineteenth, twenty twenty-one to order. Roll call, please.
Eric Gaffino.
Here.
Trustee Curtis.
Here.
Trustee Lowry.
Here.
Trustee Gailey.
Here.
Trustee Carol.
Here.
Trustee Martinez.
Here.
Trustee Salazar.
Here.
Okay, any audience comments?
No, there are no audience comments.
All right, thank you. Trustee comments? Okay, item one for discussion, petition twenty-one dash oh four Gerald Hyundai expansion. Steve?
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight before the board is a expansion request from Gerald Hyundai. This is going to result in a special use as they are expanding their footprint and since their current use is a special use, they need another special use for the expansion. And Mike is going to take us through the process and he is just looking for direction from the board on whether you're interested in moving forward.
Thanks, Steve. I think Steve hit the major points. A special use expansion requires a special use. This is particularly is recent memory with the Verlife expansion, the brother Traberry expansion, and also the Treple Street Church expansion. This will also require a site plan approval from the Plan Commission as the addition exceeds twenty-five percent of the square footage of the existing facility. They are on schedule right now for public hearing for the Plan Commission on May fourth. Similar to what we had done for Brother Chimp is just allowing them to get on an accelerated timeline for approval. So the goal would be to get any feedback tonight from the plank or excuse me, from the Village Board, have the public hearing before the Plan Commission on May fourth, and then to bring the item back for final consideration on May seventeenth. Everything meets zoning. There are no variations or deviations needed. However, it's just a special use in the site plan approval. And if there are any specifics, I would, if Jeff or Doug or John DeVore are out there, if they want to say anything with regard to the development.
I think it looks good. I don't have a problem with it. It's nice to see them expanding.
I'm fine with it. I think it's great.
Yeah, I agree. It's nice to see a business that's expanding. So I think that's a good thing.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea myself.
I'm good with it.
Yeah, it looks really nice.
Okay, sounds like unanimous. Very good.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Item two, petition twenty-one oh three Randall Terrace Apartments. Steve?
Thank you, Mayor. Item number two on the agenda regarding the Randall Terrace Apartments is a commercial. This was, first came in as a commercial center PUD in two thousand and one. It has also gone back to the cow with an updated plan for multifamily back in two thousand and eighteen, and again at the cow in August two thousand and nineteen for review. Recently went to the Plan Commission for public hearing due to deviations of the PUD plan. And with that, Mike is going to walk us through the new updated plans.
Yeah, again, Steve hit the good points. It went to, in two thousand and eighteen was a concept plan. June four, two thousand and nineteen, the Plan Commission made a favorable motion to allow for the zoning of the lot two of Randall Road Commercial Center for multifamily residential use. Randall Road Commercial Center is a B two, a commercial mixed-use plan year development. So at that point in time, they had requested the ability to do multifamily residential on the property, which the plank of the Village Board had reviewed the concept plan was favorable. At that time, they didn't have a final site plan, so we discussed the preliminary site plan with the Plan Commission. They had comments. Again, they did recommend approval of the zoning. And they had, the petitioner had come back for the Plan Commission on April sixth. We had a favorable recommendation from the Plan Commission on the site plan itself. They were set, satisfactorily addressed all the comments associated with the first site plan review, additional dumpsters, pedestrian movements and walkways through the facility. So they, the petitioner done a great job of, of addressing all the Plan Commission's concerns. With this one too, it did require additional public hearing. There were deviations associated with it. The details are in the staff report to the Plan Commission. But what is being considered for, for, just for comment at this point in time would be the site plan and the deviations, which includes a floor area ratio, a building material. The PUD itself has a list of building materials and finishing products that they'd like to integrate some more modern materials into that. And the front yard fence, at one point in time, they had discussed doing a perimeter fence around the property. The fence is being prohibited in the front yard of a business district, so they would need approval for that. So that's one of the requests. So just for a consideration discussion tonight is the site plan and also the three deviations I just mentioned. And if you want, I can go ahead and if Mark Sorrentino is on right now, let him go through and discuss the development himself.
I have a quick question, Mike.
Yeah.
Why, why are they requesting a fence in the front yard? I think aesthetically, I mean, wouldn't that be detracting from the facade?
No, so it's a gated, it'd be a gated community. The, they, they're not a hundred percent whether they're not going to pursue the gated concept, but at one point in time, it would be a gated community that would have opening gates for the residents. One of the conditions of approval from the Plan Commission, actually, that was staff derived, was the fact that the fence would have to be a black metallic non-chain link construction. So it would be more of an ornamental type fence that would go around the property if they were to put a fence up.
So something like what Spring Gate has?
Correct.
Thank you.
Mark, if you're on, if you want to go through and discuss your...
Please mute it.
Now, can you hear me?
There you go.
Yes.
Sorry. Good evening. Thanks for your consideration for the request for the amendment. Randall Road Commercial Center is located on Randall Road, north of Oak Street and south of Orchard Road on the west side of Randall. Randall Road, the commercial center consists totally of twenty-two acres. Lot two is the proposed site development that we're requesting sixty-six units. Sixty-six residential units on five point two acres. The project will include four residential living buildings and a clubhouse and pool. The units will consist of one, two, and three bedroom units, ranging in size from about eight hundred and twenty square feet to fourteen hundred and fifty-two square feet. All the public improvements to this project are in sanitary sewer water. Storm is currently provided and stubbed to the site. Stormwater retention is provided for off-site just west of lot two. Miller Drive is in and lot two fronts on Miller Drive. Lot two is also part of the Owners Association, which maintains the retention pond and stormwater and other common areas. You've got some site plans, I believe, in front of you. One of our concepts for the site plans, it's got four buildings that actually surround a center court landscaped courtyard. So all patios and balconies will be facing a landscape courtyard rather than parking lots or backs of buildings, et cetera, et cetera. The courtyard will ultimately consist of some sitting areas, walking areas, barbecue grill areas, some fully landscaped and be available for an event to be all ages, children, adults, et cetera. The clubhouse consists of about thirty-two hundred and sixty square feet and a pool. It'll have a small fitness center, recreational center, business center, and a leasing office. There's adequate parking. We meet that see the code by a little bit and it also consists of some garages. I won't reiterate all the dates that everybody's talked about. We've obviously been before you with recommendations positively. And we're asking today for, for approval on our final site plan and the amendments to the PUD, or not approval, but recommendation to the board. That's all I have.
Mark?
Thank you.
Any comments?
Yeah, do we, do we have an estimated rental range for the units? Is it going to be directly competing with Spring, Springbrook?
So the units that, all our units are, will be competitive in the marketplace. There'll be market rate rents and they'll be competitive with other, other properties in the surrounding area.
Thank you.
I think it looks beautiful. Yeah, and three bedrooms. I think that's a good addition.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think the project looks really nice. I, I do like the idea that all the balconies and the patios face in toward a landscaped view as opposed to like he was saying, out into the, you know, into a parking lot. And some of those have a view of the pool from this drawing here. I think it looks nice and I think it will be a nice addition to the community as well.
Thank you.
Mike, any comments?
Well, I have no problem with any of those factors that need a special approval. I think they all sound pretty positive and pretty attractive. So I, I say that we go forward with it.
Trustee Carol?
I just had a question for Mike Toll. Do, Mike, are the springs, is that complex? Is that fully rented?
I don't know. To my knowledge, you know, every time I've heard a number, it's always in the, always in the low to mid nineties with regard to vacancies. So they are fairly rented up.
Okay, I, I'm just, I, my only concern is if we're saturating the market with like townhouses and apartments in North Aurora, are we gonna end up with a bunch of vacancies at some point if we've got too many of them? That would be my only concern. But if the spring's ninety percent, I assume we can still, you know, have a development like this and fill it. We just approved one over by, or we just discussed one over on the other side of Oak Street. So I just don't want to saturate the market.
Yeah, I believe the townhomes over at Forest Ridge Drive and Oak Street, what you're referring to are going to be owner occupied. These would be market ratings.
So I can make maybe just one brief comment, and that is, we did a market study for the area and any of my inquiries with various properties, I've visited all, I'd say all of them, but a good portion of them. And they're, they're pretty full. When they get built, they're, they're rented up pretty fast. And our market study indicated a pretty fast rent up based on the market.
Yeah, we did have the mixed-use building at Randall Highlands going, Mark, too, also by Turf Room, and those were, I believe, one-bedroom and studio apartments. Those were smaller units as well. Those were the, that was probably the newest of the rental units in town.
Right.
Okay, that was my only concern and that answers my question. I just want to make sure we're not going to have a bunch of vacancies.
Trustee Gailey?
I'm good.
Good. I'm good as well. I had some nice layout and interfacing. I think that's kind of nice, create that courtyard and, yeah. I think the way the house in market is, looks like there is a need for somewhere for somebody to rent or buy and I, you know, it sounds like a good choice there. So it looks good. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
Thank you.
Okay, item three, humane pet sales. Steve?
Thank you, Mayor. As the board might remember, you recently brought up the idea of a humane pet ordinance. Mike's going to take us through a draft ordinance that he is proposing to bring back to the board for approval.
Yeah, thank you, Steve. We have discussed this on April fifth, the community of the whole. I worked with Kevin General, Village Attorney, on drafting an ordinance, again, modeling this off of the city of Naperville, where we allow the sales only if the animals came from rescue organizations, humane societies, or commercial, or animal control facilities pertaining to the retail sale of dogs and cats. So that's what this ordinance here does. Here's a draft for a comment. And one of the, one of the provisions being that the, the retail establishments themselves are required to keep records. So that would be our way of monitoring where those animals are being sourced from is by keeping records up to two years. We don't have any pet stores in the retail capacity selling dogs and cats currently. And I know other cities have been discussing it. I know Aurora is going through it right now. They've actually discussed doing a licensing provision on top of that. But they've actually, as part of that, looking at establishing an animal control commission. So we're keeping it simple. We're just adjusting the retail sale of cats and dogs for rescue organizations, humane societies, and animal control facilities.
Sounds good.
I'm for it.
Yeah, I think we need to do something. I like, I like how you started it off. I, I do believe that the puppy mills will be looking for someplace to go and we don't, we don't want them in North Aurora. So I like the idea of, you know, what you have drafted up. I think it'll work for what we need for now.
I agree.
I too.
Somebody else?
Me too. Yeah.
Easier to do now than once you have some type of business like that and then trying to pull it back. So it's better just to be proactive about it.
And I think that's what those other communities have been struggling with a little bit, is that they do have establishments that are currently selling from, you know, organizations other than what I've mentioned.
Okay. I don't know how this would apply to internet sales. I know it's really, really difficult, but you know, this is a good step in the, in the right direction.
Okay.
All right, thank you for your comments.
All right. Item four, last item, North Aurora Days. Steve?
Thank you, Mayor. Item number four on the agenda tonight is a discussion of the two thousand and twenty-one North Aurora Days event. This is before the board tonight, simply because the function of North Aurora Days is a function of the village. It's an event that, unlike some communities where it's run by a non-for-profit or a Chamber of Commerce or whatnot, North Aurora, the village itself is the one who puts on the event. So we have to have a conversation based on the recommendations and the, the concerns that were raised by the North Aurora Days Committee at their recent meeting. With that being said, we're going to walk you through kind of a, just an overview. The North Aurora Days Committee last met on March eighth. The discussion was focused on whether or not the committee thought the North Aurora Days could be held in the same capacity as past years based on recent ongoing down with COVID nineteen. Committee members voiced concerns regarding social distancing guidelines, special event liquor licensing, continuing the spread in the, the continued spread in the region of COVID nineteen, and health and operational concerns from those who are either employees or volunteers or attendees of the event. Some things to discuss and consider as part of this discussion is, right now vaccinations are available statewide to anyone sixteen and older. The state is currently in phase four, which limits Illinois festival guidelines to fifteen people per thousand square feet. Roughly, that would be an attendance of seven hundred and fifty people at the Clock Tower Plaza. There was talk of going into a bridge phase, also known as phase four point five. We haven't hit that metric yet by state standards. And that would be thirty people per thousand, which is roughly fifteen hundred people at, at the event would be the capacity limit according to the state. If we were to hit phase five, there is no capacity limit and everything. We'll go back to normal as far as the events are concerned. As far as the special event liquor licenses, special event liquor license have to be issued by the state as well. And we checked in with the Illinois Liquor Control Commission. And just for a little backup, this is an interesting event once again because it's a village event. But the beer tent is not operated by the village. It's operated by a combination of two local civic groups, the North Aurora Lions Club and the North Aurora Mothers Club. They are the ones who obtain the liquor license and they are the ones who operate the tent and sell the liquor at the event. As we checked with the state last week, they are basically saying that they are issuing special event liquor licenses on a case-by-case basis. The people having the event, in this case, would be the village. If a license is issued, they would like the village to ensure capacity limits are, are followed. And if the beer tent, or excuse me, if the liquor license is denied, there would not be an ability to have a beer tent. Other variables, as I mentioned earlier, a lot of towns, in fact, we're one of the only towns I can, I can think of that run the event as a village event. So not every other village is in the same situation as, as us because a lot of the non-for-profits don't have to work directly with the state as the village does on issues. As far as planning the event goes, we're, we're up against it as far as the timeline is concerned because obviously the normal event takes place the first weekend of August and we're approaching middle of April right now. And with that, it takes several months usually to book a full event. There's, we have one band on our contract from last year. We have a couple bands that would be interested, I think, to, to play again if we gave them the opportunity. Contracts for items such as tents and generators might be difficult on short notice. Until we figured out what we were doing, the, the tents and generators and other contractors like that, like they have commitment well in advance, you know, sometimes as much as a year in advance. The village still needs a license agreement with the new owners of the Clock Tower Plaza. We have been working with them for several months. I think we finally got to a place where we're moving forward with them. That's something that's actually supposed to be on a tentative agenda in May. But because it is a private location, we need them to issue a license agreement for us to attend as normal at the Clock Tower Plaza. So getting back to wrapping this up, this conversation with the committee, the committee planned, ultimately, they didn't think that they could have an event in a normal capacity, but wanted to wait till May, their May meeting to make an official decision or recommendation. And therefore, before the board tonight, because at the end of the day, the committee is just a committee, it still goes back to the Village Board for a decision. At that point, we have to look at it from a different perspective. We have to figure out whether, A, the Village Board thinks you can have a full event, a modified event, a virtual event, an event potentially later in the year, or if the best idea is to cancel North Aurora Days altogether. And before we get into that discussion of feedback from the board, which is what I would be looking for in order to go back to the committee, is right now we're trying to figure out exactly what options we might have if we were to reduce an event. So, so once again, the main options are have the event and then try to do the best you can to put it together with the, with the caveat that you might not be able to actually lock down a lot of the things that we're accustomed to at North Aurora Days. B, you modify the event, which could mean a different date or a smaller version of the event at a different time and, or a different location. And then, of course, the other one would be canceling North Aurora Days. And with that, I would like to open it up to the Village Board for discussion.
Well, my first response is, I kind of like putting it off. I think an event somewhere in the early to mid October would be great and we could have the full thing, I think, by that time, I'm hoping. What do you, what a, what are other?
Yeah, I agree. I think if we went to October, the first two weeks in October are usually pretty warm. Maybe make it a fall festival.
Why would we wait till October when anyone who wants to be vaccinated can be vaccinated as of May first? Additionally, the events being held outside and studies have shown that risks of transmission are very low in an outdoor event. So, you know, we need to stop looking back and start looking to the future. And the reality of our situation is we have a vaccine widely available. We'll be in the, the bridge stage, you know, probably relatively soon. And I think our businesses really need to get things back to normal and things getting going again. You know, I mean morally, why, why would we even want to delay or suspend it when, again, there's a widely available vaccine? And by the first week of August, the only ones who won't have been back, will not have been vaccinated are those who choose not to have the vaccine. So I think, you know, we need to look at, you know, from a public safety perspective, I, I really don't see our metrics continue going the way they're going, why we are operating with such hesitancy, especially knowing that our businesses are dying to get back open and dying to see, you know, crowds get, come, come through our village.
Well, my thinking...
The problem is the volunteers.
Well, yeah.
We don't have...
I was thinking October.
It's not compulsory. It's not compulsory if you're, if you don't volunteer or if you have a vaccine. If they've been vaccinated.
Some of the reasons include giving us a longer planning period in order to organize it properly. It's beautiful weather during October and you really can't predict how the vaccinations are going to unfold and how that process is going to unfold. So I'm thinking that if we delay it a couple of months, it will then give us more time to make sure that it's a safe thing to do for everybody, whether they're vaccinated.
I just read in the Herald, El Crow Village is having their Fourth of July three-day celebration and they expect seventy-five thousand people to show up over three days. And they're proceeding under the assumption that the vaccine works. Well, the positivity rate is...
I don't know about El Crow Village, but in North Aurora, we have volunteers that staff the beer tent and many of us that do attend it, we work, you know, until wee hours of the night picking up trash. In other words, it's not like operating a lemonade stand here. We're all volunteers at this event. If he, if the volunteers are uncomfortable running it, specifically working the ticket booth and the beer tent, we're, we're strapped for people to work it. The other, other municipalities, other municipalities, let me finish.
Why would they?
Other municipalities, other municipalities pay people. We're not paying people. We're asking volunteers. If we have volunteers willing to do it.
We need to stop living in the past and look at the future. These vaccines work.
That is, that is, that is the future.
If the vaccine worked, why would people be afraid in August? In August, which is months...
It's not afraid. It's a question of getting volunteers to run the event, Laura.
Correct. So if you, excuse me, from the infection control background, I think it's actually a good idea to perhaps put some thought into how this event is going to take part and taking a couple of months to make sure that we can add a couple of things that perhaps could be of value and control any type of infectious disease from spreading. And at least from that standpoint, I think it's a good idea. Yes, I understand the vaccine, you know, it's supposed to be effective.
It's an outdoor event. Let's not forget.
It is an outdoor event, but there's still contact between people and they're in close proximity. And that's exactly what transmits disease, right? So in this, in this matter, I, I think that having a little bit of extra time, it, it's for the sake of, of the residents of North Aurora and everybody that attends. That's my perspective, you know, although I do want to see our businesses succeed and I truly sympathize with our Laura and, and her thought process. I, I just don't want to, don't want us to, to basically stumble on, on people's risk and, and have an event.
The fact is that the positivity rate is exactly double than what it was two weeks ago. So it's not like the, you know, the positive rate is going down, hospitalizations are going down. But I don't know that at this moment, while more people are getting vaccinated, I, I don't necessarily think it's like we're out of the woods and it does take some time to plan these things. So, um...
And not to mention that a vaccine is not an immediate vaccine. Your body still takes time to get used to antibodies and everything else. So a vaccine doesn't, you get a shot today, you, you still get COVID if you, if, if you're not careful tomorrow. You know, so it just, it, things work certain way.
I mean, I was in favor when, you know, being on the North Aurora Days Committee myself, or was on the North Aurora Days Committee, that we gave some discussion to having something that was a little bit, maybe, you know, at the very early fall, where it would just give us a little more time to plan and also give people a little more time to feel comfortable, get the vaccine. And, you know, most of us felt that people are still a little bit skittish, whether that's based on reality or not. People are nervous. Some people are nervous. Not all people are.
Laura, I completely empathize with your position. The problem is, we're not in phase five yet. And it's been a while since I've been on the North Aurora Days Committee, but what I do remember is it takes months and months and months to plan. And it takes a whole bunch of volunteers to plan. And what would really hurt more than canceling the event or pushing it back would be to plan the event and then get shut down because we can't get a liquor license or get shut down because we have to revert back to phase four or something like that. We don't, there's too many variables that are unknown. Number one, we don't know that we can use the clock tower. And if I'm the owner of the clock tower, I don't know that I want fifteen thousand people in my parking lot, you know, during a pandemic. The other thing is, are we going to be able to get food trucks? Are we going to be able to get all the logistical stuff there in time? Where, I mean, we're in April. I, I mean, North Aurora Day starts planning in September, right? Mayor Gaffino is...
That's correct. Yep.
Yeah.
I, I mean, so I, I don't think it's even really logistically possible to do a three-day event in September or, or October. I think it might be more realistic to do kind of an Oktoberfest, like a one-day Oktoberfest or something in late September. But I, I just don't see logistically how we are going to pull off and, and enlist the Lions Club and the Mothers Club to do the lion's share of the heavy lifting and, and try to do that in... Four months.
I agree.
Well, I agree with that. You know, we asked the staff, we asked the police. Um, and some are inoculated, some aren't, like Tal, uh, uh, Trustee Martina says. Maybe some of the bodies, people that have it or have taken the shot. May take a while for the antibodies and they expect the police to be out there in the public works and our staff that we protected this whole time where we split shifts and. We had people staying home, work from their house and, and, you know, I mean, nobody can argue, we all wanna get back to. You know, how it was, I mean, no doubt about that. Um, but, but to me, I just think it's prudent, uh, you know, delay it, like I said, maybe like Trustee Carroll said, have a one-day event. If we can't do clock tower, maybe we could do, uh, at the village hall, um. But, you know, like you said, liquor license is an issue, um, I've, um, Administrator Bosco, did you say thirty people per thousand square feet?
Correct, if you're in the bridge phase.
Right, which we are now, I mean, right?
Uh, no, we're not in the bridge phase right now, we're in phase four where it's fifteen per thousand.
Oh, so it's even less, so, um, yeah, so. We'd be violating, uh, state, you know, mandates, I guess, if you will, and, and doesn't put us, you know, to good position there, so.
Well, Steve, where do we have to be to get a liquor license? Is it state, um, phase five?
They said that they issue them on a case-by-case basis, but they want you to adhere to capacity standard. And so I wanna be clear again that they, and the, the board is doing a, a great job of going back and forth about the volunteers because that is. The big issue is if you're going to have a normal North Aurora Days with a beer tent. It would be the Lions Club and Mothers Club that would issue, that would, they get that liquor license and they are the liquor license holders for that event. What we could do too is at the upcoming meetings is we could start getting a better handle, it's been two months. We can start to see exactly what those committees comfort level is too. We don't know what that civic, what their, their current, uh, comfort levels are.
Yeah, we need to know what the volunteers think, that they're willing to.
Yeah, I was just gonna ask that, have we reached out to them to see what they're, uh, how they feel about it? Even maybe in like a later, you know, late September. What do they think about? Putting on an event, even a one-day event where they're gonna have to, you know, do the beer tent and, and the tickets and all that.
I'm sure they might be interested, but like the rest of us, we're all kinda waiting to see. What happens here, like, uh, Trustee Salazar says, uh, their, um. The rate has gone up, uh, you know, over the last month, um, I think everybody's just kinda waiting to see what the trends are and, um. We'll go from there, like, so we hate to put them in that position either of saying, hey, we're having it, you know, come on out and. I think delaying that. I'm thinking that's the best, best, uh, solution for now, logical anyway.
So you're thinking, Mark, the delay until, you know, maybe possibly beginning in October, late September?
Maybe the, or four days, like, uh, Bosco said, maybe they can meet. See what the feeling is and see what the trends are and see how it's going, I guess, and. Uh, but I know the committee was, I think, all in favor of not having it at all. Uh, at the time when we met, but then there was some conversation about if things turned around. Things are improving, that they would, you know, consider a modified version of it. So that's kinda how we left it.
I think it would be prudent, um, the reason we brought it in April to the board is because. We're kinda figuring that to do a modified event, you'd have to have at least a few months out. I mean, we could probably get, um, something simple. All done in a, in a fairly quick timeframe. But by doing it in April, by going to the March committee, we were able to see how the vaccine started to roll out and whatnot in February. And then it gave us a perspective on when we'd have to have a drop the decision. So with that. The idea was take it to the board after the, the committee met in March, bring it to the board now in April. Get some initial feelers and try to figure out exactly where the board felt about the, the event itself. Brings it back to the committee meeting, which is May tenth, so it's, uh, you know, once again, it's not, it's only three weeks from now. Um, and then at that May tenth, North Aurora Days Committee, I would assume the agenda would be basically conversations of potential options for. Uh, some kind of modification to the event, which whether it be, um, different types of things that like if we can't get a liquor license, what would the event look like? If we, if we can't use the clock tower, what would it look like? And present a couple of options to the board eventually, um, a few weeks later, a month later.
Yeah, it sounds good. I like that idea.
I think it's a safe way of planning.
See any other comments or thoughts? All right, thank you, uh, Steve. Um. Motion adjourned.
Um, if you guys, excuse me, I don't know if it would be the right time to say a few words. I, I believe this is my last meeting, if I'm not wrong, um, as a trustee. And, uh, you know, I just wanted to let you guys know how much I enjoy, uh, being part of this team and, um. I wanted to say, Mark, I, I, you know, I always remember you, Mark, Mike Graffino, Mayor. You know, there's three Marks, but, uh, anyway, Mark, I always remember you winking the eye at across the entire hallway. Uh, when I would get a little nervous in, as I started in. You know, I can't tell you how much I appreciate that, you know, it always make me feel good and you're confident and, um. You know, I, I really appreciate that, um, you know, um, Laurie, Mike Laurie. Uh, you know, I don't know anybody that has such a balance, um, as you do, you know, you're always the, you know, the word that. Uh, I think balance things down, uh, between, um, the team. Um, so I, I always saw you as, as somebody, you know, they can always go through and, and took sense. Into anything that doesn't make sense to me, you know? Um, Mark Gately, you know, Mark, you, you've been, uh, one of the first people I met. And, um, I can't tell you how much you encourage me and how much you motivated me to do not just political stuff. But just even work, uh, uh, itself, you know, I, 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 I enjoy sharing a seat next to you. And, uh, thank you for caring, uh, when I had, uh, health conditions. I know you're very committed and, um, it, it always makes it hard to, to, to be as committed as you are, you know? So when, when I felt that, um, um, I had to push myself. Uh, I always wonder, you know, I always wanted to match the, the commitment and look up to, to you as far as, uh, that came along. Um, uh, Trustee Salazar, you know, I, uh. I know that we didn't get to share the board for too long. But I feel like we did because I know that you have been coming to our meetings for a long, long time. And, uh, it makes me very happy to see, you know, people like you on the board. And, uh, I, I really appreciate, um, all the hard work because even though. You, you, you wanna say you're one of the newest additions to the team, I feel like you're not new. You know, I, I feel like, uh, everything, everything you're doing there, it's already going to be, uh, a lot easier for you. Uh, than it was perhaps for somebody fresh like, uh, I was, uh, so, um, I'm, I'm looking forward to it.
Thank you, Tal, appreciate that.
Me too, um, and, um, uh, Mark Carroll, Mark. I haven't met people as knowledgeable as you are in so many different aspects. You know, uh, your background is just amazing, you know, because it, I, I can understand a lot of things, but when it came down to legal stuff. I always kinda lean on you and, uh, trusted the background that you had, uh, in, um. I, I, I really feel that that's a very nice quality in you, no matter how knowledgeable you are, you are always very easygoing and. And welcoming, uh, Laura, you know, Laura, you have such a strong backbone. And, you know, I, I really like that, you know, that no matter what it is, you know, you expose. Uh, what your constituents' beliefs are there, uh, uh, and or may be. And it is what it is, you know, and, uh, it takes a lot to go through and be that way. Uh, and I really like that, you know, because, uh, sometimes it's not, uh, you know, the way people may agree. Uh, or disagree, you know, in, uh, and to expose that out there for the constituents. Uh, it takes a lot, it takes a lot of backbone, um, so you really balance the board, I wanna say, you know, I, I, and I appreciate that. Um, Mike Todd, uh, Mike, you know, just about everything that can be put out there, you know, I said, I, I feel sorry sometimes. For all the stuff that you get to, uh, come up with and try to, you know, balance in the equation. But, you know, the, from the engineering standpoint, oh my God, you know, I, I don't know how you do it. Um, Chief Fisher, you know, I, I, I'm really, uh, happy and proud to have a team. Looking out for the safety of our community as good as yours. I can tell you, I met some of your officers in, in the past and, um. They're very kind, you know, and not only kind, they have a very keen, uh, judge, sense of judgment. You know, so I, I, it, it, I wish every other municipality and city would have a team as we have. And from your standpoint, I, you know, I never. You're one of the nicest chiefs to have around, could, fiscally conservative, you know, but you're always looking out for your team. And, um, I, uh, I really appreciate that and, uh, I, I wanna say from my perspective as a resident. Uh, you know, I, I really appreciate you taking care of us and our families, uh, please tell that to your team. Um, and, um. Well, um, I, I know I'm forgetting, uh, John. John, you know, the, the amount of stuff that you have to solve with all the, uh, presenting of the wells and all the. Logistics, uh, you know, it's, it's, it's a lot, you know, I, I, I. I always had a, a slight idea of what you were talking about and, uh, I was always wondering. With the amount of time that it would take a regular person as me to get to know what you know. Uh, you, I would never achieve it in this lifetime. So, you know, uh, having you on the team is just amazing. And, uh, Bill Hana, I never seen presentations the way you put them, you know, I, accounting, it's, it's a tough one and. It man, you really make us all look good, you know, when, when you put those presentations, you know, there is a. Uh, there is being professional, but you're a step above professional, you know, you're perfectionist, you know, in, and, uh. I think that from that standpoint, I just wanted to point that you make all that stuff look easy on a piece of paper. And a, and a presentation, but there's countless hours in, in, in putting all that stuff together. Um, and, um, Steve Bosco. You're the glue to this team, you know, uh, the easy way to put it for Steve is, you know, I, I see you like the guy that's. Throws ten balls up in the air, you know, tennis balls up in the air and never lets one fall down. You know, as just, I don't know how you keep them all up there, you know, but you do it. Um, and, um, everything that our team conveys to you. You make it happen in between all the members. So I just, uh, wanted to say, Steve, you know, um. When I can't figure out a, you know, I get overwhelmed with business or however, I always thought. How did you do all of that? How did you manage to do all those things? And not drop one in the process, you know, so if Steve can do it. Every one day I'll do it too. And, um, in regards, um. Our attorney, our attorney's always been great, uh, he's always had a level-headed and yet, you know. Always spoken in terms that I can understand, so he made it so easy for us to. Go through and get an understanding of our legal consequences and the rights and wrongs, right? So, um, uh, yeah, and, um, uh, Natalie, Natalie Stevens, I wanna say. Uh, you know, the amount of stuff that gets put together by you in the background, uh, it's so much. And the, the, the abilities that you have to convey all the messaging, the websites and all of that. You know, it's, it's something that, you know, people don't often receive, but every time I got an email from you, I was, I was wondering, wow. You know, it's a lot of work and, um, well, I, um, I heard nothing, uh, uh. Nothing but good comments about the, the new trustee that would be relaying me. I, I really appreciate what you guys have done for me, I learned a lot. I enjoyed it so much and more than anything, I really enjoy serving our community and trying to do something for our constituents. So I can't thank you guys enough for, for teaching me so much and, um, I really appreciate that, uh, in, um. I know that our next team member is gonna be a great addition. And to be honest, I feel a little relieved because I know I had so many things going on with business itself. You know, I, I do feel a little relieved and, you know, I think it's going to be a, a good little break for me. To spend some time with the family and maybe be a happy camper this time. Yes, so I, uh, I just wanted to say how much I value everything, uh, that you guys brought up to me in the last four years, you know? Um, I learned so much for, from all of you.
Thanks for serving, Tal.
Yeah, thank you, Tal, thank you, Trustee Martinez.
Thank you.
Good style.
Good luck, Tal, don't be a stranger.
No.
All right, thank you, Tal. So, uh, that conclusion of the call, we're gonna be going to exec session and we won't be returning. So I have a motion to.
Um, Mayor, you, when you adjourn to exec session, can you please, um, state what we're adjourning to? Uh, this would be for pending litigation.
Litigation, correct.
A motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. All right, thank you.